Romans 1, Romans 1. We're gonna read verses 11 through 17. What I wanna do this morning, it's really, I was thinking about this when we went through equity, and I don't know about you, but when we completed equity, at least for me, my perspective of my ambassadorship, it was, it was like a light really came on with that final component there. I guess even before we could get into this, I would ask you, when we went through, after we'd gone through wisdom, justice, and judgment, and equity, was there anything for you, how did you feel perhaps, I don't know if I should say it that way, we're going feelings, this is recorded, Mark's like he's talking about feelings. How did you perceive your ambassadorship any differently once equity was at work in it? Any thoughts along those lines?
I think as you, whatever you completed equity, you really got to make those that involved your perspective, you and others, you know.
That's it, yeah.
You really had escorted it for some down that Jesus has had, and that I don't know how many ways it's been.
Absolutely, brother. I appreciate that, the Father's perspective, not our perspective. Our perspective can have us fighting to get our point across, right? Our Father's perspective can have us letting all men be persuaded in their own mind. Right, absolutely, I totally agree with that.
And these are wonders received, it doesn't have to do with us, these are, these receiving the work, these receiving everybody.
Absolutely.
The assembly, so it's not us to be deciding what should and shouldn't be done.
Who are we, right, absolutely, right, yeah, for sure. And I tell you, when it comes to Christians dealing with other Christians, and when it comes to even the ambassadorship to the lost, for those who amongst the body of Christ that do at least understand justification by grace through faith alone in Christ's work, when it comes to that, equity is sorely missing. That's why you've got, that's why you've got the fights and the quarrels and the striving that takes place there. But once we got that, we realized, I don't have to strive with somebody, right? I don't have to, I don't have to sit down and strive to get my point across. I'll seek to do so as an ambassador, as opportunity affords, but I don't have to, I don't have to make my point. I can, you know, I want, and I can let this individual and see my fathers, let them come to the knowledge of the truth. Anyway, I wanted to say, coming through that, I realized that we've got the final two in our toolkit, if you will. Now, it needs to be enhanced, it's gonna be built upon, there's no doubt about that. But with that, we really, we really start to round out as ambassadors. Think back of how many, how many headbutting sessions did you have with other folks? I mean, I did, I'm gonna prove my point to you, I'm gonna get this across. But when you come to, when you come to equity and see your Father's perspective, well, receive them and see them come to knowledge of truth. And so this morning, I wanna look at our ambassadorship, but look at it from Paul's perspective, really our pattern that's set before us, and see what it was that he had in mind, what it was that motivated him in his ambassadorship. Let's read here in Romans 1, and starting in verse number 11. "For I longed to see you, that I may impart unto you some spiritual gift, to the end ye may be established; that is, that I may be comforted together with you by the mutual faith, both of you and me. Now I would not have you to be ignorant, brethren, that oftentimes I purpose to come unto you, but was let hither too, that I might have some fruit among you also, even as among other Gentiles. I am a debtor both to the Greeks and to the barbarians, both to the wise and to the unwise. So as much as in me is, I am ready to preach the gospel to you that are in Rome also; for I am not ashamed of the gospel of Christ." Why is that, Paul? "For it is the power of God unto salvation to everyone that believeth, to the Jew first, and also to the Greek; for therein is the righteousness of God revealed from faith to faith; as it is written, the just shall live by faith." And so, Paul, ready to declare, ready to preach the gospel to those that are in Rome. Now, these are justified individuals, right? And these folks have received the gospel of Christ. Look up there in verse number, verse number six, or verse number five there. "By whom we have received grace and apostleship for obedience to the faith among all nations, for his name, for among whom are ye also, the called of Jesus Christ, to all that be in Rome, beloved of God, called to be saints, grace to you and peace from God the Father and the Lord Jesus Christ." So these are justified individuals. They've already believed upon Jesus Christ unto salvation from the debt and penalty of their sins. And now he says he's gonna preach to them the gospel of Christ, follow me? And so, the gospel of Christ that he's gonna give them, this body of doctrine that we've been working through for some time, he's about to deliver to them. And it's not just the, what's commonly thought of the gospel of Christ. He doesn't say, I'm gonna give you the gospel of Christ, and then I'm gonna give you a bunch of other stuff after that, as if the gospel of Christ was only the first five chapters. The good news for us in Christ Jesus includes the fact that we are justified unto eternal life freely by His grace through the redemption that is in Christ Jesus. And then, glory to God, it includes that He has baptized us into Jesus Christ, we're buried with Him by death and by baptism, buried with Him by baptism, and raised with Him to walk in newness of life. And so, we come to understand that the gospel of Christ has a lot of good news for us. It's not just the fact that I can get out of hell and miss the lake of fire. And as we've gone through the book of Romans, our appreciation for the, what he declares here in verse number 16. "For I am not ashamed of the gospel of Christ." And he had many reasons to be ashamed, and we're gonna look at some of those. He had plenty of reason to say, you know what, I'm just gonna shut my mouth about this thing. He had plenty of reason to say, I'll talk with the folks inside of that assembly there, but I'm not necessarily gonna, it's just too much out there. I mean, people are, they don't want it. And he had plenty of reason to say that, far beyond what I just alluded to, that may be our rub, but he had plenty of reason to be ashamed of the gospel of Christ. And notice, he says, "I'm not ashamed of the gospel of Christ," and then he gives us the first reason. "For he knows that it is the power of God unto salvation to everyone that believeth." The power of God unto salvation to everyone that believeth. I always do this, I just get rambling on and forget where I'm at. We are ambassadors for Christ, and at this point, there should be evidence of the power of God unto salvation that enables us to preach the gospel from a standpoint of not being ashamed. I wanna be careful here, because I feel like we're just, to me, we just received equity not long ago, right? And that, and I know we've been sharing our faith, and we've been sharing that, but it's like, we've been, just as we've been edified unto godliness, we're also being prepared as ambassadors, we're also being equipped as ambassadors. And the Corinthians receive a rebuke for failing here, okay? And my understanding is, we're not there, and I'm sure our pastor will let us know if we fail to go on and we fail to be the ambassadors were to be, then we'll be worthy of the rebuke that the Corinthians received down the road. And I don't, we're not there yet. But knowing where we're headed, knowing that we're being prepared, knowing that everything that's been set forth, that the power of God unto salvation to everyone that believeth. As an edified son of the Father, our apostle writes to us from a standpoint of having exercised himself in the, I'm gonna say it like this, the salvations of the gospel. We often speak of Israel's salvation package. Really, we have a salvation package as well, right? We do, we're saved from the debt and penalty of our sins. We're saved from sin's dominion over us. We don't have to, when sin says jump, we don't have to say how high anymore. We did in the Old Man, right? We don't have to do that anymore. We can choose to yield our sin. And so, we have a salvation package deal. As Paul says here, he's not ashamed of the gospel. "For it is the power of God unto salvation." My understanding is that he has in mind not just that you can be saved from the debt and penalty of your sins by believing upon Christ, that's true, but it's the power of God unto salvation to do so much more even beyond that. My understanding is that is what would keep him. Everything in the entirety of this epistle that we've been receiving for quite some time now is in mind, and is my understanding as to why he's not ashamed of the gospel of Christ, why he continues to go unashamedly and to seek those moments, seek to have hospitality and being given to it, and to continue to seek to be the ambassador that Christ had called him to be. He knows that the gospel of Christ is the power of God unto salvation, both from a standpoint of saved from the debt and penalty of his sins, but also from the standpoint of demonstration of that power. Turn over to 1 Corinthians, we'll be coming back here to Romans, of course. 1 Corinthians, chapter 2. Let me repeat what I've, what I said there. He knows, maybe I should rephrase that, that was a little confusing. He knows that the gospel of Christ is the power of God unto salvation from the standpoint of demonstration of that power. I'm not talking about the fact that he passed out hankies and folks got saved on an island, that happened. Or that he could lay hands on the sick and they would raise, not those signed gifts that he had at that time, when the emulation period there in the book of Acts. But he knows the demonstration, he's seen within himself. He's communed with his father about the demonstration of that power. And these Corinthians had seen the demonstration of that power. And again, my understanding is that's not talking about the fact that he could lay hands on Eutychus, had it fallen out of the, you know, out of the balcony, and he raised up from being dead. That's not the demonstration, but let's read it here. 1 Corinthians, chapter 2, and verse number 2. "For I determined not to know anything among you save Jesus Christ and Him crucified; and I was with you in weakness, and in fear, and in much trembling. And my speech and my preaching was not with enticing words of man's wisdom, but in demonstration of the Spirit and of power." Why'd you do that, Paul? "That your faith should not stand in the wisdom of men, but in the power of God." He comes in, and he's, you know, Mark's drawn the picture for us before, you know, as to what he might have looked like, and there would be nothing desirous of him when he would come in. And yet, he was full of, he was full of hope and full of joy despite what we read there. Despite being in fear and much trembling, despite being in weakness, and so on and so forth. It was the power of the word of God to keep him in the face of all that adversity on demonstration. He had demonstrated it to the Corinthians, he had demonstrated it to himself. Again, there is salvation from the debt and penalty of sins. And when we're talking about the power of God unto salvation, that would cause us to say, you know what, I'm not ashamed of the gospel of Christ. I know that people don't wanna hear it. I know nobody wants to hear, "For the wrath of God is revealed from heaven against all ungodliness and righteousness." Get away from me with that, that's been the rub the whole way through. You go back in Israel's program, they didn't wanna hear that wrath, the wrath of God. No one wants to hear that. But, but he would say, "I am, I am, I'm not ashamed of the gospel of Christ, for it is the power of God unto salvation." You can, we can speak of the salvation of the debt and penalty of our sin, but no one's gonna demonstrate that to themselves or to others on planet Earth, right? I mean, we could, the joy of it. There's other aspects of this salvation that can be demonstrated, that we can know, that we, that we have footsteps in collectively, as a group, as we come to this one mind and one mouth, that we have, that we've been, this mutual faith that we have. At this point, Paul has demonstrated salvation from sin's dominion. I alluded to it earlier. At this point, doesn't Paul have evidence of sin's dominion over him being broken? Can he not commune within himself at this point with his father, knowing that he's walking in newness of life? Knowing that he's choosing to yield his members as instruments of righteousness unto God, producing fruit unto holiness? Has he not laid down his head and smiled with a smile on his face, having witnessed this power? Having this communion with his heavenly Father? And I say, so have we, so have we. When we, when we consider the motivation of our apostle, as he says here, "I'm not ashamed of the gospel of Christ, for it is the power of God unto salvation." He knows this power. In fact, this is a power he can look in his life and say, you know what, I can see evidence of that. I can see where I used to be a slave to sin, and where I had to do those things. And I can see now a track record where I could say, you know what, I don't have to do that anymore, that's not who I am. When the sin that is in his members came calling, he could say, that's not who I am anymore. I'm gonna choose to yield my members as servants of righteousness. He has that track record, he sees that power of the gospel unto salvation, and so, so have we. Does he not now have footsteps in walking after the Spirit and not after the flesh? And don't we? Hasn't he been saved, this is a big one. Hasn't he been saved from the weight of the sufferings of this present time? That's, hey, look, the world and the Christian world is, I mean, that's a mind blower for folks. You talk about why, have you ever heard this one? You've got this one. If all that's true, if there's a God, why do, why do such bad things happen to good people? Now, we wouldn't say it that way, we would say, what good people are you talking about? But you've heard that argument, right? Why, we're saved from knowing, from not knowing, rather, saved from the weight of the confusion about the sufferings of this present time. He has that peace of mind, he knows that, and again, as our pastor will say, that might be a reach, when I say saved, I don't know that it is. I think that, that when I see the confusion and I see the disarray in the world and in Christianity about, about why things happen, I don't think it's a reach at all to say, being saved from that is a significant thing. It's something that we could rejoice in and say, I know, if I'm sharing with somebody, whatever point we may be talking about, that may be in our mind, we may not be talking about that point, but that can be a part of knowing, hey, this is gonna lead to them, this is gonna lead to them knowing why things are happening the way they're going on, right? This is gonna lead to them knowing how they can, how they can put their Christian life into effect by yielding their members. All of this, all of this can be the weight, can be the motivation behind, behind our preaching the gospel of Christ. Has Paul at this point, that he's writing to the Romans? I mean, he's an edified believer, he's been through, he's already been, he received first, of course, the revelation that is given to us here in the book of Romans. But has he not at this point been saved from being wise in his own conceits about what happened to Israel? That's a big deal. The Christian world, the Christian world is messed up about that. They are having to come up with all kinds of stuff constantly. We don't have to wonder, we know, we have that assurance, we have that comfort. We have that, we have a salvation, if you will, from ending up in that confusion. And we, and the person that we deal with, we know that the prospect is there for them as well. We know that, that, we're assured that this power to deliver them from all this, not only the debt and penalty of their sins, not only sin's dominion over them, but the, all of this confusion about what's going on around them. The power of the gospel unto salvation will take them away, will deliver them from all of that, as we share it with them. Again, he knows this, this is what our apostle tells us, this is his motivation. This is why he's not ashamed of the gospel of Christ. As Paul's declaring the gospel unashamedly here, has he not witnessed the power of God unto salvation from thinking more highly of himself than he ought to think? As we've come to appreciate being many, as we being many are one body in Christ, and that we've been dealt the same measure of faith, do we not share this salvation now? I call it a salvation. If you, I don't, I don't know everything about the theme, background stuff, I know enough. My dung pile was different. I say my dung pile, I'm speaking from Philippians 3, that's what Paul called his religious life prior to, prior to Christ. Now, my dung pile had to go like this. It talked about, there are those who are called, have a special calling on their life. I mean, they, so, it wasn't said overtly like this, but if those had a special calling on their life, and boy, God's doing something mighty with them and wonderful with them, by implication, if others don't, others don't have a special calling. You see what I'm saying? And so, that, there was this clergy laity thing that was created there. It's an awesome thing, when I went through Romans, chapter 12, verses 3, 4, 5, and realized, we've all been given the same measure of faith. We've all, it, there's no special calling, let me rephrase that. There is a special calling, and every single one of us have it, and that's awesome. That's a fantastic thing. He was, Paul would have, that would have been a big, that would have been a huge deal to him as a Pharisee of Pharisees, right? He would have thought, he would have thought that, hey, he had, he had a special place, a special place compared to others. But he was delivered from that, thinking more highly of himself than he ought to think. At this point, when Paul is declaring and preaching the gospel of Christ and setting forth to preach it to the Romans, can he not detect the power of God, or I'm sorry, the power of the gospel to produce patience in tribulation? Having him to be instant in prayer? Look, do every one of us have a track record of every day hitting on all cylinders on these? I'll confess to you that I don't, but I can say that I have enough victories of saying, you know what, that was, I loved it when he brought up the coupon thing here recently, cashing it in, you know, redeeming that, I can redeem that day, to be mindful, to be instant in prayer. I dare say that we have the track record, and we have the, we have the experience, if you will, that we've exercised ourselves, at least to some extent, of to being patient in tribulation, to be instant in prayer, and knowing the power of the gospel to produce that. Should there not, with Paul at this point, that he's preaching the gospel and that he's not ashamed of it with these Romans, should there not be in him a purposed heart? I'm going double negative when you hear. To not avenge himself, but rather to give place unto wrath? Does he not know how doing so will provide things honest in the sight of all men? That was an awesome thing, right? It was awesome when we realized that, wow, God is, is, he wants me to demonstrate to others his, what he's doing, what he's doing in this time, that he's, that he's holding back his wrath. And he, he understands, and we have the power to do so. Is that, is this not in place with us now? Has he not overcome evil with good in accordance with this understanding at this point? What I'm trying to get us to see is that we've got footsteps, we should have. We all have to some degree, some level of footsteps in this power of God unto salvation. And just as our apostle declares here at the beginning of the book of Romans, he's not ashamed of the gospel of Christ. Look, we're gonna be made to, we're gonna be made to feel ashamed of the gospel of Christ. We're gonna be made to feel ashamed of whether we're, whether we're speaking to someone about their, the debt and penalty of their sins, of being saved from that, whether we're speaking to another Christian about the fellowship of the mystery, we're gonna be caused to be ashamed, to feel ashamed for that. And so, I don't do this, and I'm not bringing this up as some kind of rebuke for us not, and I hope it's not coming across like that. But in preparation, as we move forward, as we go on, and realize what we have, and when that, when that comes, and when we go to share that with a friend, a family member, a neighbor, and that opposition comes that we have in mind, I know, I know the power of this thing, I know the power of the gospel of Christ, and the totality of the power, not, not just thinking in one point of that. And so, that can, that's designed to keep us to where we are not ashamed as we move forward. We utilize these skills, we're gonna utilize these skills as ambassadors. Let me, let me say this. I don't know, I don't know if Mark left that for me. Is this a spider being attacked by like a giant mosquito? It's, it's science time for the kids, but it's a curious one. We're, we're, he probably did. We're gonna utilize these skills, we're gonna, yeah, should have just kept that one to myself. We're gonna utilize these skills as ambassadors. We, we know justice, and we can think of, okay, so I'm gonna pay my taxes because I know that there is, that God has ordained, he has ordained this human government. It's the ordinance of God to keep evil in check so that His word can have opportunity to have impact in this world. We could, we could take that one point of doctrine and say, so, I'm gonna render, you know, I'm gonna pay custom to whom custom is due, and so on and so forth. But you realize, where to use that, maybe not yet, hopefully, none of us not quite yet. But eventually, Paul had to use that understanding, and he used that understanding in his ambassadorship. It's fascinating to watch with some of those, and we'll look at it here in just a second, how he used those things, even in his ambassadorship. I got ahead of myself, but we'll look at that in one moment. Doesn't he know, doesn't Paul now know as he's about to declare the gospel of Christ to the Romans and to anybody in this dispensation of the grace through the preservation of the word of God? Doesn't he now know that he's saved from being disoriented as to knowing the time? Don't we have in us the power of God to renew our minds in connection with the time? The world's confounded about that, the Christian world is confounded about what's going on, what God's doing. We have the comfort, the peace of mind of knowing, of knowing that we know what God is doing today. Has he not had conversation, I say it like this, you're gonna think I'm nuts, but that's all right. Has he not had conversation with sin that is in his members about walking honestly as in the day, and not in rioting and drunkenness, not in chambering and wantonness, not in strife and envying? Knowing the climactic, ungodly end of those works? Here's an interesting one, let's look at this. Turn back with me to Acts. I wanna, I wanna, I wanna look at how Paul even utilized this understanding. Again, we're talking about judgment here, let's look at this passage. Take me to Acts 23. I think I missed one earlier, I did, I did, we'll go back to that. Acts 23. He knows this. It's, it's not only does he know the power for himself and for the one he's speaking to, but he's gonna utilize these skills in his ambassadorship. Let's look at this, think about this one as we read through it, and how this is utilized here. But in Acts 23, again, we understand that in the book of Acts, Paul's apostleship had an aspect to it that it didn't have beyond Acts. We understand that he's going into synagogues here, and he has a ministry to the circumcision, he has a ministry of emulation. Nevertheless, with that said, let's look at, let's look at how he uses, or utilizes, rather, some understanding here. Acts 23, verse number 6. "But when Paul perceived that one part were Sadducees and the other part Pharisees, he cried out in the council, 'Men and brethren, I am a Pharisee, the son of a Pharisee, of the hope of the resurrection of the dead, I am called in question.' And when he had so said, there arose a dissension between the Pharisees and Sadducees, and the multitude was divided; for the Sadducees say that there is no resurrection, neither angel nor spirit, but the Pharisees confessed both. And there arose a great cry, and the scribes that were of the Pharisees part arose and strove, saying, 'We find no evil in this man; but if a spirit or an angel has spoken to him, let us not fight against God.'" And so, we'll stop reading there, but I think it's interesting. He sees these two dissenting sects, if you will, coming upon him to accuse him, and he's able to discern something about them. He's able to discern that they are, how do I wanna ask this? What does he know is gonna take place the moment he brings up the point in question, or the point that he does? What's he know is gonna happen with him? They're gonna fight. How's he know that, where does he get that kind of understanding from? He was one of them. That's right. Yeah, he was duking it out with, he was the, he was the slugger with the rest of them, um, heavyweight, if you will, but he knows, he knows, he knows they're, they're striving, right? He knows there's strife and envy here. He knows he brings this up, and he doesn't do it just, he doesn't just do it to save his hide, and we're going to see that here in a bit. He does it for the furtherance of the gospel. He does it so that he can go right on down the road. He can get another couple of years going on. He, and they'll say something, he'll appeal to Caesar later on, and he'll get a couple more years, and he'll preach the gospel more and more. Everything he does is not just, okay, I'm going to utilize this skill so that I don't get beat more today. He does it so that he can further the gospel. We'll see him tell the, uh, Philippians that very thing. Turn over to, turn back to Acts 22. I alluded to this one. Um, but he utilizes justice to, for the furtherance of the gospel. He understands now the ordinance of God and how that God will keep evil in check through human government so that his life in all godliness and honesty can have an impact upon, around, on the, on the men around him, on, on those around him. Look here in Acts 22 and verse number 24. "The chief captain commanded him to be brought into the castle and bade him that he should be examined by scourging, that he might know wherefore they cried so against him. And as they bound him with thongs, Paul said unto the centurion that stood by, 'Is it lawful for you to scourge a man that is a Roman, and uncondemned?'" "When the centurion heard that, he went and told the chief captain, saying, 'Take heed what thou doest, for this man is a Roman.'" How far do we want to go with this? Uh, keep reading. "Then the chief captain came and said unto him, 'Tell me, art thou a Roman?' He said, 'Yea.' The chief captain answered, 'With a great sum obtained I this freedom.' And Paul said, 'But I was born free.'" "Then straightway they departed from him, which should have examined him, and the chief captain also was afraid, after he knew that, that, uh, that he was a Roman, because he had bound him." And so we can read on, and Paul's going to get more time. He's going to utilize justice. He knows, he knows what they're there for. He knows what God has ordained them to do, and he, he brings about, uh, those, those aspects of, 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 of what he understands to further the gospel. Again, he's not just trying, he's been beaten enough at this point. Um, that's not his, 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 he, he's ready to die, but he's furthering the gospel as a minister of Christ. Along this with the justice, I should have went here first. Turn over to 1 Timothy, chapter two. Let me repeat what I said earlier. He understands, when he's ready to preach the gospel, he's convinced that it's the power of God unto salvation. He knows the power of everything that's going to be revealed in that epistle to the Romans, and of course, to us by way of preservation. He knows that, that through it, um, the understanding that God will keep evil, evil in check through human government is there, but he also knows that it, that his life will be able to live, be lived in all, in ours perhaps, in all godliness and honesty, so that we can have an impact on those around us. Look, look in, in 1 Timothy, chapter two, and verse number, verse number one through four. "I exhort therefore, that first of all supplications, prayers, intercessions, and giving of thanks be made for all men, for kings and for all that are in authority, that we may lead a quiet and peaceable life in all godliness and honesty. For this is good and acceptable in the sight of God our Savior, who will have all men to be saved and come to the knowledge of truth." So there's another, there's another will of God verse for you. God will have all men. It's his will that all men be saved and come to the knowledge of truth. Notice who they're going to first pray for here in verse number two. Kings and all that are in authority. Why? That we may live a, lead a quiet and peaceable life in, in all godliness and honesty. And if we're able to do that, verse number three, "For this is, this is good and acceptable in the sight of God our Savior, who will have all men to be saved and come to the knowledge of the truth." And so this utilizing of justice, and I, I, I'll confess to you my, my understanding here as to, obviously we're praying for those who are in authority, right? Here's what we know that that prayer is not. We know that prayer is not the spiritual zap that all of a sudden President Trump or Nancy Pelosi or anything, anybody else that we, they're getting the spiritual zap and all of a sudden now they're going to do everything according to God's will. We know that's not that, but it is something. You follow me? It's one thing to say that, that's what it's not, we get it, but it is something. And so we're to have our, our prayer set toward those who are in authority, and we're to know why that's the case, so that we might live a good, a good and acceptable, for, for, that we might live a, a peaceable life in all godliness and honesty. And we know that what, what the outcome of that might be. Men might be able to be saved. That's the will of God. And so Paul understood these things. He knew this as he's going through, as he's declaring to the Romans, the, that the gospel of Christ is the power of God unto salvation. This, this is his understanding. He knows this is what it holds out for him. It's more than simply, you could, I say simply, that sounds terrible to say it that way, because that's awesome, to be saved from the debt and penalty of your sins and to spend eternity, uh, in, 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 in the heavenly places as we've come to understand. But he knows that it's far more than that. He knows it's the power of God unto salvation. Paul has the, at this point, he has the power of God unto salvation to, to not reject a weaker brother in his baggage. That's a big deal. That's a big deal. Remember, I, I remember how it was in, in trying to deal with somebody and, and not carefully dealing with them about their baggage, all right? And, and, and causing friction there? He knows the power of God and the salvation so as to not reject the weaker brother and his baggage. He knows this power to transform his mind so that he will patiently let that weaker brother be fully persuaded in his own mind. And isn't he persuaded of this in view of the soberness of the judgment seat of Christ? We too have that same persuasion. We too have, have been, uh, partakers of that, that, uh, that power of the gospel. That's I'll share this. They, they may listen to it, that's okay. I'm not going to mention names, but that's, that's part of, in dealing with the individual I told you at the beginning of this. I'd dealt with them before. In years past, I'd dealt with other folks and probably wasn't, not probably, didn't have equity in place, right? You, you the same. He knows the power of having that. He knows what that can do, um, to allow somebody to, that room, uh, and, and to, to nurture that, uh, honesty of heart that's there. He has it. He's received the power of God unto salvation in connection with not pleasing himself through liberty at the expense of a weaker brother. Haven't we? We've received that same power. It's, 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 it's in us to know, hey, I may be able to do this, but how's that going to affect them? That power is with us to know. Especially among those, amongst graceful, I can tell you, that, that power is not there. Hey, I'm free. I can do it. I'll throw it in your face, you know? It's there. I mean, it is, but we have that power to say, I'm, I'm, I know that my liberty may not be most expedient thing to be done in this. He knows that. We've received the same thing. So Paul knows the power of God unto salvation. He's not ashamed of the gospel of Christ. That power of God unto salvation is manifold, as we've just, we just went and touched on. And I, I had thought about doing, you know, I'd thought about this a while back and, uh, and, and I know that we just went through all the hope doctrine and kind of ran through. I, I'll tell you, for me personally, I can't do that enough. I can't go back and just, and just keep that all fresh, fresh in the mind. I couldn't do it enough. And so I hope that as we've done that, I hope, my, my, my prayer, my hope for that is that we can, um, rekindle, if not, uh, if need be, some things there and rejoice in that power of God unto salvation. Secondly, back to Romans one and verse number 17. There's something else he knows. He's not ashamed to declare, to preach this gospel of Christ to you that are in Rome or to they that are in Rome and to us. Firstly, as we just read there in verse 16, because he knows it's the power of God unto salvation to everyone that believe it. But secondly, verse number 17. "For therein is the righteousness of God revealed, from faith to faith, as it is written, 'The just shall live by faith.'" He knows that it's going to be through the gospel, the gospel of, uh, Christ, that the righteousness of God is going to be revealed. Not only is the gospel of Christ committed to Paul, that, uh, that was committed to Paul, the power of God unto salvation for us, but it's also the means by which the righteousness of God is revealed. Look at Romans three. Romans three, and in verse number 21, very familiar verses. "It's the righteousness of God, far beyond a perfect lawkeeper, when we perceive the righteousness of God." He was that, but he was so much more, uh, to us. Romans three and verse 21. "But now the righteousness of God, without the laws manifested, being witnessed by the law and the prophets, even the righteousness of God, which is by faith of Jesus Christ, unto all that believe, all them that believe, for there is no difference. For all of sin and come short of the glory of God, being justified freely by his grace through the redemption that is in Christ Jesus, whom God has set forth to be a propitiation through faith in his blood, to declare his righteousness for the remission of sins that are past through the forbearance of God, to declare, I say at this time, his righteousness, that he might be just and the justifier of him that believeth in Jesus, him which believeth in Jesus. Far beyond a perfect lawkeeper, God commendeth his love toward us, in that while we were yet sinners, Christ died for us." And not only that, he imputed that righteousness to our account. Again, I'm going over this not because that's the first time you've ever heard that. That's not what I'm thinking at all. I'm going over this because that's what he says. This is in mind when I don't, when I'm not ashamed of the gospel of Christ. This is what's causing me to go ahead and declare that and preach to others. These things would cause me to, uh, to, to, uh, to not shrink back from the opposition that would come. That's why we're going through this and looking at that. Again, it's not the first, you know, I realize we've read that hundreds of times, but it's his righteousness, and we have the privilege to declare the righteousness of God. And not just that, we have the privilege to declare how the righteousness of God is going to be produced in us. As we've come to find out in chapter number eight and verses one through four. Turn over there with me, if you will. It's good that we're reading more scripture. Safe that way if I'm not talking too much. "For what the law could not do, in that it was weak through the flesh, God sending his own sin, son in the, the likeness of sinful flesh, and for sin condemns sin in the flesh." Verse four, "That the righteousness of law might be fulfilled in us who walk not after the flesh but after the spirit." Righteousness being produced in us, but the righteousness of God is revealed from faith to faith. His faithful performance of it are giving him the honor and the glory by believing what he said that he's done and what he'll do. Believe it or not, I'm actually right on, I didn't think that would happen, but I'm fairly on course. Paul, don't you know that nobody wants to hear these things? The gospel of Christ is the power of God unto salvation, and through it the righteousness of God is revealed. Paul, don't you know that people get uneasy when you tell them they're worthy of God's wrath? The gospel of Christ is the power of God unto salvation. Those aren't empty words. That's not something that he would chant. That's something that he knows what's behind, what's said there. The power of God unto salvation, and through it the righteousness of God is revealed. And here's what we're going to look at some next hour. Paul, don't you know that people will think you're crazy, a crazy religious zealot if you preach the gospel? It's the power of God unto salvation, and through it the righteousness of God is revealed. And so as you know, Paul experienced all these unpleasant responses. What we're talking about here of just feeling some uneasiness around folks, obviously his experience went far beyond that. And we're going to look even into some passages where his experience and even those he was speaking to had gone far beyond just feeling uneasy because of the opposition of the, to the gospel of Christ. But, um, we're going to consider, we're going to consider further, we're going to take what he declares here in Romans one, how that the power, that he's not ashamed and, and, and take that forward and look at some more passages. We would expect the same. Again, we'll consider that more in the next hour. I'm just going to stop there and we will, uh, take a break for 15 minutes or so and reconvene at that time.